This is our regular session here at the Board of County Commissioners Meeting Room at Courthouse Annette today, Wednesday, July 6, 2011, and the time is 9:02. District 1 Commissioner Hammett, District 2 Commissioner Vickers, District 4 Commissioner Martin, District 5 Commissioner Ellis. All commissioners are present. Moving down to adoption of the agenda. Do I need to take a motion to adopt the agenda with any addition or submission from the agenda?
The amendment additions and additions.
Motion from Commissioner Vickers to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hammett. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, by no. Do we have anything for petition for adoption? Moving down to approval minutes from our regular meeting panel, June 15 and June 29. Commissioners, you have it in your package. Do I need to take a motion? Motion from Commissioner Vickers. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Ellis. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, five o. Moving to Department reports, omitting Ms. Barfield who's on the agenda and also Ms. Ginn. Do we have anything from the Sheriff Department supervising election? If not, down to the consent agenda. We have items 1 to 4.
Motion to approve this.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ellis to approve.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Vickers. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving to Public Works Department. Number 1, review of bids for Project 2011-04, Miscellaneous Payment Project. Mr. Henderson.
They all got this this morning handed out, so yesterday we had a bid of the miscellaneous payment dog research unit Madison, those drugs, lower bids, when I would look at it, and this time I recommend it for itself, scrub bid for Miss Lane's payment.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve this. I'll say.
Motion for our Commissioner Ellis, second by Commissioner Vickers. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, five o. Second discussion regarding not the Patlawn Street, not the Pennston Street under the Public Works Department. Mr. Vickers, Commissioner Vickers.
Chair, I asked that they put on the general date. It was off my attention that these roads, this subdivision, pissed off Route 8 Road, and it's one of those that we don't pay the road. For us, the roads got to a point that it's tough to get in there with emergency vehicles. I asked Mr. Henderson to go out and look and see what it would require, and he issued a minimal work just to get it passable, you know, five trucks and ambulance. There's probably 15 or 18 homes up at this, or subdivision. It's one of those that established back before we had current guidelines. And what I like is just permission for the department to go in, I think said, mowing and get a little bit of.
Well, the main thing, the main thing is bushes, bushes are grown out in the road. It's what I call the pit trail road. It's from, for one thing, they can go through there, and if the ambulance goes in there or a fire truck does go in there, the limb is going to be in the way. It's got several washes in it, but the washes there, I was in there with my truck, but like I said, it's passable as far as the roads run you through there, but it does have some wash out there, Commissioner Vickers. But the main thing is you need the bushes cut back on it, and if a power road is four tenths of a mile long and the other road is two tenths, and going in, cutting the bushes back, take a little less than a day going in, probably to cut the bushes and get out in there.
So it's just general maintenance that you need on.
This is a big general maintenance mainly for emergency vehicles to get in and get out. I mean, if they have a fire or ambulance had to go in there, it would be bushes being the way, but not do, go in there to do everything, you haul dirt in there, fill up the washes there, I think it would take a bit more to do that.
This is just, what I'm asking for is just make it accessible to the emergency vehicles.
Does she motion?
Yes.
Is this private road?
It's, it's right. It's one of those subdivisions that.
We've got a ton of them, I hear, division position.
Right, it's just, I mean, we've got a $500,000 fire truck, we just purchased up there in Cherry Lake.
I think we're starting to turn on this, I don't know if we can get through.
Well, you really don't have any authority to go on private roads. I think if you want, you would certainly be allowed to offer a service like that to private individuals. If you're going to do it, though, you need to have a policy. You need to say, we hereby create a policy, we're going to clear brush on these kind of subdivisions at this time and all of that. I mean, you can't, you know, if you clear the brush on this subdivision, the other subdivisions will have a right to, I think if the board chooses to enact such policies could, and say, we offer this service to the public, we offer this service, which you need to have some criteria set up and how you're going to decide who gets the service because the expenditure of this public money on private property would be problematic.
Take a little pay on some of these.
I know in the past, I've had folks in a little, I've been serving out there, you guys, everyone has had some, you know, and I hate to say some of these folks, you know, they just bring a load of dirt, it's creative, you know, it's on private property. I know we can't go in there and accept, they're ours.
And we're running it to follow, because if we do it for one, we have to do it for the others.
It's hard to let people know.
Yeah, well, you might say a thing easier, we charge them assessments for fire stations and all that, if you can't get in there with a fire truck.
And we even got driveway like that to handle, some of these folks, the plane losses that people put in.
Any other discussion? Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Vickers, and second by Commissioner Martin. So since we do have it on the floor, all in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, aye.
One, four, four opposed.
Yeah, I was.
Two.
Three, two. I appreciate.
Okay, Mr. Davis still? Do you have a motion fail? I'm what? David still? That's what we did. Okay, I'm going to move to approve of application for the Madison Pregnancy Center for funds from the Choose Life license plate. Come forth, board, please.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I make an application on behalf of the Women's Pregnancy Center of Madison for Choose Life funds that we've accumulated since that program began. We're the only agency of its type that works in this county servicing women who are facing crisis pregnancies. All of our services, it's the application that paid are offered to our clients free. Last year, we saw 120 clients for the first time, and an average client will come back to us either five or six times. That kind of rapport is established between our volunteer counselors and the young women who are in this situation. In many cases, we're providing no kind of support that they get. We're the only agency in this county, as far as I know, that's providing prenatal sonograms. So I might also say that we're open 23 hours a week on our location on Long West Marion, and we support the pregnancy center with a $28,000 budget, all by private donations from the churches and the individuals who believe in what we're doing. So that's, this is the first time we've ever made an application for any kind of public money under this program that was established by the state legislation. That's our mission. I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that you might have.
Your agency, they do not put a charge on the services they provide for them?
Absolutely none. We're providing prenatal assistance, maternity clothes, baby beds, diapers. We support babies through six months of birth. A lot of it is the counseling, and we are a Christian organization, so it's extremely important for us to have the opportunity to spread the gospel of Jesus Christ and the process of evangelism.
These funds come from the Choose Life, all of those little tags are sold in Madison County, they're distributed back to, those ones back to the county. Presently, there's $12,638 in this account. This is the first time they've requested this, these funds, and Mr. Reeves prepared this application that was presented this morning by Mr. Bowles.
Board.
So they just automatically received APD funds collected from these, from these tags?
Not without the application, without the application, right. And.
We've never received the money before.
So first time.
Don't that money just accumulate then?
It has accumulated over years because up until, I think, the legislature passed, amended this application process last year, before there had to be a full-scale audit of these funds, and it was just, take the money for the audit, then the money that was coming in. Now, there's a change, and they just need to attest to those expenditures. Mr. Reeves might want to add anything about.
Yeah, the $12,000 that's in there is accumulated over many years. Madison doesn't generate all that much money with these tax. The form in front of you is, this copy from the statute, all the requirements, statutory requirements we put into the form, so that they can just attest that they meet all those statutory requirements, that they're entitled to the funds. I think the legislature just changed this again, and so it's going to, isn't this our last year of even distributing these funds?
It'll go to the state, and it'll be distributed from the state to the.
Right, so I think this is the last time you're going to see this, because after this, these funds are going to go to the state, and the state will distribute them to statewide organizations. That's.
I think that'd be interesting. So we would just have to approve this application, but it'll be.
Yes, sir.
That'd be my motion, Madam Chairman. Second, make it through this application.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Vickers. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, five o.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner.
Moving on to unfinished business, contract for sale of the Madison County property to the Ossila Landfill.
Okay, if you look, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, I'm going to ask. At your station, there should be two, there are several things printed out. One is a contract for sale between Madison County and Ossila Area Solid Waste Administration. The other is a notice of consideration of proposed sale of conveyance of county property. Now, if you recall, when we sell property, there's a general on statute that says you have to bid out all sales of real property. In this case, the board had negotiated with Ossila Landfill, and it was worked out a tentative agreement on what you're interested in doing. Now, the statute on the sales of real property allows us to pass an ordinance providing for alternative methods of selling real property, which this board did with the thousand man. Now, what the alternative method requires is that rather than a true bid, just saying, okay, anybody bid, let's bid, it allows us to look at a contract, get the terms more or less worked out, post a notice for 10 days, and then bring the contract back at which time the board can enact the contract. The point of the notice is to let everybody know, they can go look at the contract, see the terms. If someone else wants to show up and make a different offer, and say they'll pay us more, or they'll use the property and do something better for Madison County, or anything they want to do, they can make that offer at the time. You're not required to take it, the board makes its decision, but it lets the public know that you're interested in selling the property, and they won't come in for the king. Now, what I did was, is I went ahead and prepared the contract for sale from the terms that everybody had tentatively agreed to, and prepared the notice for consideration of proposed sale. So the notice says that the board's going to consider this contract on July 20. There's a couple of things going on here. Number one, it was my understanding that the, that we don't have a true survey yet, that we're going to, that's why I listed it. If you look on page 1, the property is listed by the property appraiser, parcel ID number. That's consisting of about 137.48, which I believe is the right acre, between so and everything there. But it says that, and then it says that we're going to have, and I didn't have those numbers with me, that it was going to be a total figure, but if the, if the Ossila Area Solid Waste Authority wants to survey it, they can survey it, and they'll adjust it based upon the acre. Quite often, when you actually survey a piece of property, the acre either goes up or down. If you have a per acre figure, you can adjust that depending on the survey. So that's where, that's what this provides. On the next page of the contract, it goes into the compliance with ordinance, saying we comply, posted our notice, all that, by the ordinance, which we will have done at the time the board is to consider this. If you look at the number 6, the expenses, basically this board prepares the deed of conveyance, and then the buyer is responsible for the other expenses, such as dock stamps, reporting costs, all of that. There shouldn't be any dock stamps on this because the property's going between two public entities. But if there were, they'd be responsible. Shouldn't be, and have the law of taxes, special assessments, again, it's going between two public entities, which you go ahead and put that in there. It gives the landfill authority 30 days to perform due diligence, which is standard. Do a survey and that type of thing, get any kind of title insurance that they may, may require. The rest is pretty much standard. Where the condition of the property is, we're providing that it's, that we don't know of anything that's wrong with it, but we're giving a feeling as is where it is. We haven't made any warranties, we're not saying it's fit for any particular purpose, if there's any certain amount of high dry property or any of that type of thing. And the rest is just our standard contract that we, that we do. So if I need from the board the two, those two figures, the total purchase price and the per acre price, which I believe we probably have already approved in the minutes, and then if you all approve the notice, go on the courthouse doors, the board can do that, and it can be approved at the July 20 meeting, to be given back to the Ossila Landfill Authority for their board to enact. Once they, if they approve it, then we've got a contract, and it takes off from there and it's a plus. So if that's, any questions?
So you're saying that with the survey, it would be, what the property appraiser has to list?
The, it was my understanding, what the board did, when you approved the contract, you approved a total dollar figure, I don't remember the exact figure, if I remember, but anyway, it was several hundred thousand dollars. And that figure was based upon what we thought the acres to be from the property appraisers' figures, which is 137 acre, 137.42 acres. Now, the property appraiser, when she does that, she does that with satellite photos and computers and all that, and comes pretty close. It's not exact, though. When you, you don't really get the exact figure until the surveyor gets there on the ground and actually runs the lines and does the calculations. When that happens, that 137 acre figure may change. It may go up, and it may go down. If it goes up, when the purchase price goes up, because we're giving them more acres, and it goes up by that per acre, it goes down, they end up asking plus, because we're giving them less acres. And if they choose not to get a survey, that's fine, we go with a 137 acre figure, because, and that would be my advice to you, because I doubt the acre is going to change enough to justify y'all paying for a survey, see? You know, it's probably, if that's survey money, you're out forever. From their perspective, though, from buying it, they want to have a survey, because the survey gives them exactly the description, and there's value in that for them. We're getting rid of the land, so it doesn't really matter if we have the exact description.
And that was the concern of the board, the survey, who was going to be responsible for the survey and the land? And I like the way you set it up, pretty much, it's clear in time, and they can.
And they're not required to. If they want to, that's fine, if they don't, that's fine.
Board, notice for proposal and the contract for sale pending the prices, pending your information that you need to.
What we request is that you go ahead and approve these for posting on the courthouse steps. We can get the dollar figures from the minutes, let us put that in for minutes, and we'll go ahead and proceed. That's acceptable.
That'd be my motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Vickers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ellis. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, five o. Contract for sale of Madison County property to an N F bus line.
Madam Chairman, this is a deal where the N F bus line is looking at bringing a business to Madison. This is a certain piece of property in the industrial park area near the I-10 interchangers of the county. When the county purchased this property, gosh, it's several years ago now, the county commission instructed staff to attempt to locate new businesses, to increase employees, jobs, Madison County, and that's what this board was interested in doing with the property. So in that regard, the staff have been in contact with N F bus lines. They are a, the bus lines that operates all over the state of Florida, has local connections. And they were interested in starting a local business or a branch office of one of the businesses here in Madison County, that'd bring employees and something like that. So from consideration is, they needed a piece of property out there by the interstate, and so the thought was that it would be worthwhile in Madison County to give them a piece of property in exchange for them starting a business and bringing in the jobs. They needed a couple of things, though, for this all to work. One was, they needed an amendment to the industrial park covenants restrictions so that they could operate. I've got that here, as well as that proposed contract. They needed to survey and do the, their site plan on how they wanted everything set up, which they have done, they've completed a survey. So that's already been done. Now, the amendments I've got here and the contract, I'd like to talk about the amendments in just a second, that they were requesting. That's this document, Amendment to Madison County Trade Covenants. And the first three pages are the actual amendment that the board will be asked to sign, or asked to enact. The last page, though, is where it shows you what's actually going on, look at that last page. And what they're wanting is, they're wanting to add these sentences that are underlined to the covenants. So right now, the covenants exist without these underlying sentences there, but the amendment would add this. We negotiated this between staff and N F bus lines. They, in my opinion, they're good common sense things. I don't think we have a problem, that I would have a problem with legally, and I don't think they change it. The point of restricting covenants is we want to keep the property to have a business-friendly atmosphere, so that these folks can do their business and everybody else can do any other businesses that we may choose to put there. If I kind of go through them, on 4.6.1, that one specifically discusses parking and loading and all of that, but it also, what they wanted to add was, the sentence that says, provided that, if approved by the county on the site plan, set out the covenants. Non-paved grass or gravel areas adjacent to regular paved parking areas may be used as overflow parking areas or temporary parking on site. Any such overflow parking area shall be designated as such on the site plan. Point of that is, they run tours, they may have, on a non, you know, not all the time, but they may have big groups come in, they need a lot of extra parking, they want to be able to park on grass if they have to, not every day, but just when these things happen. And so that seemed like a reasonable request on that part. On 4.11, garbage containers, oil, gas, it had a provision that said that all of these must be screened and landscaped so that it looks nice, and that wanted the option to simply bury the tanks, and then they wouldn't need any screen. And so they wanted to add a provision that said, alternatively, such tanks and oil containers can be placed underground without such screening requirements. So again, it didn't seem to hurt what we were trying to accomplish, keeping the property business-friendly. The next one was in 5.2, it said that the, it's a requirement, there's no emission of smoke, fumes, gases, dust, noise, et cetera, at levels higher than are allowed by law. Now, what they wanted, they were concerned because they have a, with these buses, they generate exhaust and all that, and they wanted a provision added that said, noise and fumes generated by street legal motor vehicles, which are probably registered in the state of Florida or any other state shall not be regulated here in. So they wanted very plain that if they've got a street legal motor vehicle that's approved in the state and all that, that that's not more involved than that excess noise and dust, which, you know, again, seemed reasonable. So they need to make this work, they wanted these amendments for our restrictive covenants. I don't see anything wrong with those, they seem reasonable to me anyway. Whether the deal worked out with the N F bus lines or not, they seem reasonable to me, and didn't seem like they would hurt anything. Now, on the actual contract, I know, I think Commissioner Allison said that he'd been to a meeting to lead last night, and they may want us to hold off on the actual contract.
So there's a process, you know, to do the CDVG, this is all idiot, the home, the CDV grant, they moved folk, and we don't want to do anything to cause any problems with the CDV. I think, I reckon, they probably, they'll give the covenants, which they'll charter good, no matter who comes in there, that will work, but the position of the contract until.
We have a motion made by Commissioner Ellis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, five o.
Okay, Madam Chairman, so okay, we'll just, can we have staff go ahead and read it as a contract?
Mr. David Steele, can you come up, please?
Good morning, counsel. I apologize for being late, a little calendar problem this morning, but anyway, we're here, that's the good thing. I'd like to thank our board member, Jay Craven from Madison, for being here today. As you know, our board of company board serves with no pay, they do it gratis, and we really take a lot of time from Jay's schedule in order to do that, but we appreciate him as a local businessman, being here in the community, and he has a great support for this community on the district board. What I'm here today, though, is to talk about cooperation, talk about the great cooperation we've held in Madison County for such a number of years, working with Mr. Cherry and the commission for such a long time, and it's always a pleasure to be before y'all when I'm giving something back instead of taking something. And so what we're here for today is to give you a little money, called paying low taxes, which is the form of the legislature of giving you back some of the money that we actually get when we take that property or buy property within your county, comes off the tax rolls when we continue to pay property taxes on the property. The other thing I want to let you know is that the board account, the board of directors is also doing surplus lands, lands that are no longer considered to be for conservation purposes, they are putting them back out to the public to allow the public to buy them, so then they go back on your tax rolls as well. But those are lands, again, that are no longer needed for conservation. So the board's taking a lot of dramatic steps in trying to get counties back hold, especially in this rural, area, rural, we understand that we're in these. especially in this rural area where we are, where we understand now that we're in these dollars already. So I'm here today to present twenty thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-five cents to the board of commissioners. Hopefully, through our cooperation and where we are, this will help the county and everything. So with that, I would like to pray that it goes to the chairman. I appreciate it. I want to thank you.
On behalf of the board of commissioners, thank you so much for your dedication.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to say something real quick. Appreciate all the work that you guys do in the county. And again, it's the cooperation of us working together that we can achieve that. It's kind of like a delight and certainly creates some more, you know, business type minded things that we can bring back to the county. So again, Dave Steele and his staff, they work very hard. And I think that we have a lot of positive aspects for our water management district as opposed to the entire state of Florida, which is unique. And we're, we're a cherishable organization. I think we do a lot of great things in this county and I appreciate the cooperation from you all as well.
Well, you appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Back to you, business. Approval tax collection, recalculation of tax roll of Madison County for the two thousand and ten tax year. This is Francis King. Your discussion regarding the replacement of the roof, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Shaw, just would like to get some direction on the repair of the roof next door over the sheriff's office in that building. We've got some severe leaks there. We can repair that. And the estimated cost is probably going to be fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. And we're still not going to be sure that we've got everything that needs to be repaired. Really needs a new roof. I'd like to explore the cost of a new roof if we could. And that's going to require that we have some specifications drawn up and go through our building department and approval through the building department. My preference is to go ahead and look at a new roof if at all possible. I think that cost is going to be probably fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Just need, would like some direction, comments from the board on that.
If you could do anything to it, that roof needs replacing.
Yes. It's been repaired and repaired and repaired. I think we don't need to replace it.
There's more information that, perhaps that, for the cost to replace that roof.
And also, we would replace bins on that, for someone to go up.
Right, right. We have to develop specifications first. Like, sure, occasion to do it.
A motion made by Commissioner Bickers. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ellis. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, by no. Mr. Chair.
I think I want to have in the packet, the recount for the two thousand and ten tax roll. Which shows what was certified and what was collected and what's left over to pay. I would like to say compared to last year, we're pretty much on target. There's no less of a difference this year than there was last year. So just a matter of formality, if you agree with what you see, so I can send it to the department of revenue and...
Do I have a motion?
I think I have a motion. Get it.
A motion made by Commissioner Bickers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ellis. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, by no.
Okay, thank you. And I'll get that signed and get it to the board. Thank you. I think we had a real good tax year this year, so, thank y'all.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Ms. Barfield, come on up.
I think I was on the agenda. I mean, I thought something specific you wanted to speak with me about?
I was calling you back up because I was assuming that, that the new business, I did see this again. And I missed you during the, that we said constitution office. So I decided to call you back up and see if you had anything you wanted to bring before the board.
The only thing is we've certified all the tax authorities, our numbers. We were actually up about two hundred thousand dollars, when we thought we were going to be, we were going to be down. But we had several things that were added. We're not complete. We have our tangible personal property, which is still being worked on. There's a few companies that Jim Pimpson prepares our tangible personal property, that he's requested additional information. And so we have sent letters out to these folks and asked them to provide us that. And once they get it, we'll go through that. And there could be more, there could be less, so. Gosh, that's it. We submitted our tax roll to the department of revenue as well. And they've said they had two to seven counties, I believe, that had submitted already. So everybody's anxious to get numbers and get rolling and have heard back from them as to whether we're approved yet or not. But what we can tell, we look pretty good this year.
Thank you. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Last but not least, discussion of possible action concerning the addition of an ambulance crew for the weekend. Mr. Barfield.
Good morning. If you all get, as you know, we've been called about an ambulance too many times. The call volume has increased considerably. And we came up with a way to fund the third ambulance for Mr. Business. We did the research and between Friday and Sunday for Business. And you have very short showing of coverage and the cost, we'd like to request implementation. I think our revenue has improved quite a bit from user fees. So we do have the form according to Mr. Pimpson. I say a discounted ambulance on the weekend. If you look at the chart, we will be increasing our third ambulance. We have a third ambulance from Monday through Friday. That will increase to twelve hours a day instead of nine in this business time. And then on the weekend, which is a busy, as far as rigs and people going around and all that, a lot more calls. That will give us exactly seventeen hours coverage on Friday and then twenty-four hours on Saturday and another nineteen hours on Sunday, more than, that we don't have right now.
That's great. You need that.
Ideally, it would be great to have a third crew twenty-four seven.
Right.
But this is a start to get going. Lisa went to the statistics with the computer and all that, and those were our business hours. By implementing this, we will be using part-time people, so we won't incur any benefits over time by using our auxiliary personnel. But that will give Madison a lot more coverage. A lot of our ambulances are out of the county all the time because we have protocols we have to follow. So that will give us a measure there of, of security for the people of Madison.
Well, we appreciate the color chart and everything. It is very well needed, especially on weekends. And you were so detailed in submitting all this information. And I think that's a great idea.
Chairman, it's a common that we allow to add additional.
Commissioner, motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Bickers. Any other discussion? One, the only thing I would like to see and should work on, because we do get a lot of calls from Reno to try and, you know, come up with some, innovate an idea of something to do over there. I appreciate it. All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, by no. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Alexander, did you have anything to report on?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm the only person.
Okay. Is the bath there? Mr. Richardson.
The only thing, as late as this morning, I think you may have left your message. Concerning the issue with the bridge on one fifty.
Yes, sir.
The sheriff is in communication with DOT, which is now F H P, with the governor's mandate. So they've got, you know, a lot of things to work together, but that is on the table. It's going to be meeting with the coordinator and sheriff to try to propose to make it where it is enforceable, because right now it's not. And there's going to be some extensive posting that has to be done and a detoured route to allow, you know, the trucks that do use that route a way around it. So that's going to be something they want to meet and table, kind of give the proper ideas so that we are a hundred percent able to enforce it.
Commissions, I asked, I met with the sheriff after the last meeting last week. Asked him if he could help us with the his staff, DOT enforcement, to enforce the bridge weight limit.
Right.
And I appreciate what they've done on that because I'm scared that continuing use of the heavy trucks over here is going to mess that bridge up so the local folks can't use it.
Very good.
So I appreciate it.
Better than that.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Great to have you here. Mr. Watt.
I'm just going to pull up here. Good morning.
Good morning.
For your information, the Ravenswood site on Halloween night, it was, they, that project was completed by Apex. If you had a chance to go by and take a look at it, already it looks nice. It's efficient. I think it's safer if you look at the alignment of, if it gets a little right straight in. The turn lane is funneling the best thing that ever happens. So that each direction traffic continues to flourish and it looks good. So over that, as the request of Commissioner Bickers and the board direction, I propose over a five-year plan to look into maybe some other sites as we move toward that process. So, and budget, we may speak about over a period of five years, then we can do that. Maybe a little sooner, depending upon five, six months, year, whatever, so, all of that. That's all that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Hey, Mr. Shaw, we need to thank Mr. Watt. He was out there for one-thirty in the morning with the paving last Friday morning. I think we finished up with our whole, I appreciate his effort of sticking with it.
I did see him taking on a new job too. What are you doing? A prisoner or serve something like that?
Oh, it's just our backside of Mr. Barfield to kind of take care of things around here while he's a thief, so.
And we appreciate that.
He heals.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Tom? Mr. Target.
I'll share any questions.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Bickers?
Don't think I have. I would like first to possibly adjourn this. And then about the sub pieces, there's a lot of those sub pieces that say that they just can't provide us with, as the orders. But this evening, we can do something because, you know, firefighters, the ambulance pushmen have to go to those places. And we need some means of being able, we can get where they can get.
Well, we can be adjourned. Mr. Chair.
Calendar for subjects, I might wish for a start. We wish, uh, to, uh, the twenty-eighth meeting, before coffee, we can start. That morning at nine, presentation, uh, the board departments, maybe through Thursday. I don't think we can do five sessions, but all the public business, probably, probably in the two days. There. Also, I've got our, just got some expenditures to present.
So the first project workshop would be the first, the first meeting?
July twenty, at nine o'clock. Fill your day up, but if you're going to use that day, it's four o'clock evening. And the Thursday, twenty-first.
If those other things go, that's fine. Commissioner Martin.
Commissioners Shaw, we, the government works, Mr. Pimpson, Mr. Watt, and I met with the Mack truck leader last week. And there's a new option that I'd like us to look at as far as purchasing trucks, the long trucks. It would help us continue in keeping some, healthy, good equipment on the road versus having something that rots eight to ten years. And we can give more detail with this during the budget time. But I wondered if the commissioners, when you're hearing what they have to offer, do you want staff just to bring it up? We can have them at the next meeting, four o'clock, bring it to y'all. Let you listen to what the different options are as far as lease and buyback now. Or staff can get back. So, wherever you prefer.
If I can say this, Stan.
I would like him, I would like him to.
I would too. I think I'd like him to. It won't, it won't take fifteen minutes.
I don't have a problem with that. Whatever the board decides on, it's fine.
With the new emission controls that are running on these trucks, I think it's even more important to locate out versus having, having a mechanic on board that can deal with the emission standards. And that's another thing we need to look at. So I'm real scheduled after, back up, we will be here next week.
I'll be fine.
Okay. That's all I have, Commissioner.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.